Good evening, we'll call the April 11th council meeting to order. Roll call.
Here.
Here.
Here. Present.
Here.
Here. Pete, would you mind leaving this invitation?
Sure, if we could all take a moment to pray. Dear God, our heavenly father, we're grateful for the opportunity to meet this evening. We pray that that will be with us during this meeting to guide us in our, in our decisions. We pray that our elected officials and department heads are able to convey their, their information and their proposals and that we, the council, listen and give them our best consideration. And we pray that everybody here tonight travels home safely and we pray for these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pete. Do you want to please stand for the pledge?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. United Republic, which is parents, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of tonight's agenda. Entertain a motion.
Move for boo.
Well, okay, I think we are going to accept the minutes in the consent agenda from February, no, from March, but the minutes from February are not yet complete. With that modification.
So move for it.
Second.
And motion by Ron, a second by John Ed, all those in favors. Aye, aye, aye. Motion passes. Public comments, this is a time allotted for any one of the audience to address the council. Just please keep in mind that there's a five minute time limit.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Johnson County Commissioner Brian Barrett, sorry. Just up here to make a presentation to offer if the council sees fit to offer maybe the iPads with keyboards for you guys to have to receive your packets and things on to save all the paperwork. I know you guys go through a lot of paperwork, but we have some money in the GOB for IT articles and it would fall under that. But the cost of those would be about forty two hundred and sixteen dollars for seven of them with keyboards. I think it's a really good deal for what they are. And just wanted to see if the council had any interest in reverting over to new technology instead of paper. So the stuff here to get it kind of get a consensus from you. If you guys can think about it, let me know. I'd be happy to get that process going.
Well, I've expressed publicly and privately that I'm supportive of it and these would be ones that we would take home, not be attached to the desk.
Yes, they would be take home with keyboards that come with them.
And for those of us who have some sight challenges, we would be able to see these and be able to use them to do Zoom and I'm supportive of it.
Same here.
Same here.
I'm a creature of habit. I like the old school paper, but yeah, I would support it. It's not gonna really affect me much.
That's true. We just, we'd like to save trees if we can.
I get it. Yeah, I'd support it.
And we've been doing it now, as you know, for several years with commissioners and it seems to be working really well for us. And the ability to be able to have it with us and be able to get things that we need ahead of time. This works out really good. And I know councilwoman Griesmer missed that, but I was telling them I was offering iPads. We have some money in the GOB that we could buy iPads and keyboards for the council to use instead of paper. In getting a consensus on everybody using those, switch over like we are. So that's what I was up here discussing. Anyway.
The only question I would have is that those budget books are still a really good tool to work with. I would hope we might have the one, one group of paper that the budget books would, it's a little hard to take all the notes that you have.
No, understood. And there's things that you would, I would think, continue to do, but we're still, I think, in the long run, if you look at the price of these, you're still going to save a lot of money. And just the convenience and time that you guys have to, that you can do something else while you're working on this stuff somewhere other than here. So.
Appreciate it.
We'll get to work on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Ron West coming to talk to us about uniform?
He's coming tonight. Kevin Wallace, Johnson County Commissioner. This morning in our commissioner meeting, Garmont Construction Jail is complete. We're finishing out all the paperwork on all that stuff. They were able to return to us, it was built into their contingency fund, five hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. So I just thought you needed to be aware of that. We're already remarking that for some renovations. So it was fortunate to be able to have that left over, but it did come in under budget and it came in really four months ahead of time. So.
So they were turning it to you or to us?
Yeah.
Well, Commissioner West said we were going to split it three ways. So I don't think you were taking into consideration. But I just want to let you know that it will be, we've still got the money, but it was built into their contingency. So legally paperwork wise, it's all done now. So.
That's great.
Just wanted to make you aware of that.
Are you pleased with Garmont? Are they, did they do a good job?
They did an excellent job. I would highly recommend them to someone else. So they did a good job. There was a few trials and tribulations at the beginning, but you always know that, John, whenever there's a project of that magnitude, there's always going to be something that comes up. So. Had a little bit of close out with some operational stuff, but we got all that figured out, which you know, at the end of the project, you're going to have that too. So, but I think it's all working fine. I know Chief Barnhart said in here today, I think he can attest to it. I think it's, it's all come off well and we approved doing the enclosing the stairs on the east side of the jail, their exterior. We had money left in there to do that. So we figured that we're going to get that done. We just approved the contract for that today. And we should be totally done after that. All good. So just thought I'd inform you.
Congrats. Good job.
Thanks to you and Wes for right and heard on that. Well, thank you.
All right. And just for the record, Councilwoman Griesmer has joined us.
Yes.
Next is the consent agenda. This is, these are routine matters that we take with one single vote.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion by John T., a second by John Ed, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Motion passes. Salary ordinance amendments, additional appropriations, reductions and transfers. First step is the inkeeper stats collection.
I'm Ken Kosky, Director of Tourism. Just wanted to appear before you, as I do every quarter, and see if you have any questions and also to update you as to what we're doing. Our collections, which set a record last year, are on pace for an even better year this year, as are the other metrics like guide requests, visits to our visitor center and things like that. So we're on par for a good year. We hope to open the obstacle course at Johnson County Park next month, just to have some seeding of the hill to prevent erosion and some other installation of signs and things like that. You'll all certainly be invited to come out there. We continue to work on bringing ice skating as a winter attraction, the one season that we really are currently falling short. So we're still working hard on that in our communities. And we're kicking off our largest ever advertising campaign. It's already kicked off the usual digital advertising and billboards that we did last year, but also we're getting into streaming audio. So we're talking about iPads and iPhones and some of those things. If you listen to Pandora or Sirius or any of these other streaming audio services, our advertisements will annoy you day after day. So I just wanted to let you know that, but better ours than the other counties.
Great. I'm curious, what, what grants are we working on for this year?
So we've got several on the agenda. The art craft is, has their one hundredth year anniversary and they're seeking some support to make that event successful so that the overall operation can be successful. Greenwood is, has applied for a grant for the pickleball tournament. Discover Downtown Franklin and Franklin Parks are working on improving the holiday lighting, but also apparently working or will soon be approaching the county about enhancing the lighting on the courthouse. So that would be year round lighting, but maybe it could also be modified for color on holidays. So those are just three of them. There's a couple more that escaped me right now, but a lot of good ideas. Oh, there's one other one. Discover Downtown Franklin wants to issue souvenirs from Franklin. And so they're approaching us to maybe participate in the souvenir program.
Refresh my memory what the allotted grant budget is.
I believe it's fifty thousand dollars, but if, as I told you all last time, if, if you or the public come to us with an idea, or we get too many good ideas, that's a good problem to have.
Sure.
So we'll certainly exceed that if, if need be.
Horse park.
Have you got an invitation yet for the tour? Okay, I'm waiting, just like you, and hope to go down there and see how we can contribute to that as well.
Okay, thank you.
I know Megan's back working, so I mentioned that should be forthcoming.
What were total collections last year?
It's, I believe it's in the annual report. I don't have the exact.
Okay.
But yeah, it's, it's in there. If it's not, I'll go back and I'll.
Yeah, I'll find it. All right.
Do you have any particular locations you're looking at for the ice skating?
So it's most logical to, we had talked about doing a temporary rank to test out how it works in Franklin and Greenwood are two most populous communities. So that's still the plan. Most recently talked to Greenwood and after meeting with the consultant, they're almost thinking with the cost to rent it and try it out, that we might be close enough where they may want to do something permanent, actually, like wait a couple of years. Maybe see if we can kick in a little more money and just make a permanent one happen. So that was actually the goal along. Have a temporary one show its success and then that would spur on a permanent.
Are you talking about like the caramel temporary one?
Yeah, so the temporary ones would be temporary, like it would be set up for usually seven weeks as standard from right before Thanksgiving to around New Year's. You'd set it up in a park or downtown and the, the permanent one has a refrigerated coils underneath it so that it can be operated pretty much from November to March. And yet they're usually covered, whether it's a permanent cover or a canopy to, because the only thing that destroys refrigerated ice is actually not higher temperatures, it's rain.
Okay, any other questions? I would be happy to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second. Motion by Rob, a second by John Ed, all those in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion passes. Thank you. Hey, item two. RP Crisis Coag School.
Hi.
Don't know what that is.
Uh, yeah, Betsy Swerengen, Director of the Health Department. I'm here to ask, we took a crisis coag grant. I don't know why they named it that. It's actually a COVID grant that probably should have came out last year, but it didn't. And it's to help us partner with the schools to provide services or help them provide services that they should have provided during COVID and they weren't able to. It's a two-year grant in a total of about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so we're looking to hire a coordinator for the grant. She's currently our coordinator at our vaccine and immunization, vaccine and testing clinic right now. And when that grant ends on June thirtieth, we'd like to move her into this position. We met with the schools to see what their needs are and we're just hoping to provide them with what they need that the state asked us to, to reach out to them.
Could you repeat that total grant number?
It's roughly about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars for two years.
So I've got a question.
Sure.
Um, so you're going to move an existing employee over to this position?
Right. She's a, she's a part-time employee for us right now in our COVID vaccination and testing site. And then that grant ends and that clinic will be shutting down on June thirtieth and then we would move her into this position full time.
So what's the plan after the grant ends with her and her position?
Um, well, we have some aging staff and we believe that they'll be retiring. And we would hopefully like to then move her into one of those positions that we have.
Okay, so it's not an expansion of your department. It's just kind of a shuffling around and then eventually.
Exactly. And this, this, the state said, here's this money, hire people to reach out to your schools and do that. And so this was the way we were trying to fulfill the grant requirement.
Because I guess I'm just not a fan of hiring somebody just to get.
Right. And we've been very, yeah, we've been very thoughtful about that and we, we have long-term plans to keep her as long as she would like to stay in another, in another position within the department.
Okay. Thank you.
A motion to approve as presented.
Second. A motion by Rob, a second by John T., all those in favor? Aye, aye, opposed. Motion passes.
And this is just the first appropriation. We did not appropriate all of the money. We've only gotten, I think we've gotten twenty-five percent of it right now. And now with her, with us filling her position, we'll be able to, to invoice for another tw- twenty-five percent. We can just keep moving forward until we get the entire amount.
Thank you. Thank you, Betsy. Item three is WIC.
Hello. Yeah, I'm on Zoom. Hello. My name is Tracy Smith. I'm the Johnson County WIC Coordinator. I was planning on being in person today, but my husband's out of town and we had a family situation. So my nephew and I, thank you for letting me attend it today from, from home. So I'm on the agenda today to appropriate a full-time line item. We had two gals pregnant at the same time on maternity leave and unfortunately they are not coming back. They're going to stay home and raise their family. And then we had another registered nurse that got her dream job at Johnson Memorial Hospital in maternity. So between all those is a full-time person. So thankfully we found somebody from another WIC clinic, surrounding WIC clinic that we were able to hire on. Does anybody have any questions?
Is there an effective date that we need to be mindful of, Tracy or Amy?
Um, they meet this Thursday. She has her orientation.
Well, no, okay.
Further discussion?
So you said two people are leaving, are you?
They were one, like one was a one day week, one was twelve hours a week and another was three days a week.
Okay, they were all part-time.
Yeah, yeah.
So from a full-time perspective, Tracy, adding this registered dietitian, how's that leave our position you're staffing right now? Are you, will you be fully staffed? Are you still short?
Um, we will be fully staffed, thank goodness, because our case limited at four hundred during the pandemic. So um, yeah, we were at twenty-two hundred before, a month before the pandemic and now we're uh, we're pushing twenty-five, twenty-six hundred some months. So this would be great. And then unfortunately I had a clerk that just told, gave me her two weeks. So we actually found somebody to cover her, but I don't need any additional preparations for that. Lost her to a work from home job with higher pay, but I can't blame her. So, but now we will be fully staffed, thank goodness.
Okay.
A motion to approve as presented.
Second. A motion by Rob, a second by Ron, all those in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. President wanted to point out that we have a technological improvement. If you didn't notice it, we now have speakers that are facing us that we can hear the Zoom. Is the podium speaker do that also?
Yeah, I'll.
Okay, all right. So that's why we could hear her more clearly and it overcomes some issues we had in the past. And thank you for making that improvement.
Yeah, great. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Bye bye. Next up, nine-one-one.
Pete Brandt, nine-one-one Director. Let's hear from additional appropriations. This is some equipment that we end up having to purchase for our recent server upgrade to our, to our CAD system. The operating equipment is a couple of switches that we had to purchase and then under maintenance agreements, it's a red hat license, an operating system that we had to purchase that was previously being paid for under a maintenance contract that we had with the, the previous vendor that built the, the old server. We didn't renew that contract when we knew we were getting this new server. So we had to pick up the, the cost of that license.
Any questions for you?
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second. A motion by John Ed, a second by Pete. All those in favor? Aye, aye, opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, item five fleet.
Hello. Bob Walensky. Wanted to come today and try to see if we can get a, a new line item and money to cover our GPS systems that we are putting on vehicles for the county. It, for the year would be thirty-four fifty, three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for the year for GPS on. Give us twenty, it'll give us twenty systems for the year. Yeah, we don't have a line on for that. So let's see if we can't do something to rectify that situation.
Is this a contract every year?
It, it's, it's, there's no contract. It's just if we cancel it, we cancel it. There's no outline. It's not like a twelve-month contract. So if we get rid of it, we get rid of it. If we keep it, we keep it. Been doing pretty good with it so far. We've had ten for the last year testing those, but we've never had a line item to cover the cost for it.
So is that a monthly?
Monthly is two hundred and eighty-seven fifty, I think it is, or something.
So I mean, this is for six months or is it?
No, it's for a year.
For a year?
For the year.
So who, the, the data that the GPS feeds back?
It sends back to my computer.
Yep.
And I can analyze it and take all the.
Schedule servicing, maintenance.
There's just all kinds of things that, that's forced. It'll keep track of vehicles, keeps track of speed of vehicles, just all kinds of different things for that.
Yeah.
And then the other item is, is just for communications work. We have two and a half mechanics and we have vehicles around the road twenty-four hours a day. And you know, if we have a breakdown or you know, crash, something like that, or flat tire, whatever the case is that we're not able to get that information to the mechanics that we can head out and help the situation. We've never had communications with the fleet, meaning the sheriff's department, you know, anybody that drives a county vehicle.
This for a?
Cell phone.
Okay.
Or an on-call mechanic.
So we can't, we just take that with him or her?
Yeah.
As a?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd switch it off weekly.
Yeah.
Each person.
I'll move to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion by John Ed, a second by Melinda. All those in favor? Aye, aye, opposed. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Information technology.
Christopher Williams, IT GIS Administrator. So we purchased new tax software last year and the money was allocated for that tax software, but invoices were not received until this year. So the money was de-allocated, I guess you could say. So I need a reallocation of the previously allocated funds.
Nice, you kept it straight.
We, we didn't encumber, we, sometimes there's a signed contract, we can encumber it, carry it over. We didn't do that. Okay, got it.
Okay.
I'm motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rob, a second by John Ed, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
American Rescue Plan. Once again, you have five minutes.
It'll be quicker than that. The one you see for the one million is JC Fiber on your paperwork. The other one for B, I'm not going to read all the numbers, but B, we're going to reduce that down to one point five right now.
So I'm sorry, can you know, is that?
One point five.
Okay.
We'll be back for the remainder, but we need to, to meet this, we have to go back to one point five right now.
Are you willing to tell us which subdivisions?
I'll need, I know a couple of them, but I'm not going to say them out loud. I'll let Luke say which ones they are.
I get a lot of emails about Pebble Hills.
Is that your name?
This is.
No.
I will tell you this, I will start this. This is predominantly outside of White River Township.
Okay.
Okay, so just letting you know that.
Okay, Kevin, the, the reduction to one point five was because?
We are still reviewing.
Okay.
Okay, and I don't want to appropriate three million until we know that all three million can go into subdivision roads. And if it changes, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay, but this money is predominantly looked at for outside of White River Township. Okay, and you guys can know why. Most of the budget goes to White River Township.
Luke Maston, Highway Supervisor. The reason for the reduction to one point five million is our initial look at subdivision streets for this art funding was for, as, as Commissioner Wallace mentioned, for neighborhoods that are outside of White River Township. We've already quantified the need for repairs for specific streets within White River Township, but we do have need outside of White River Township as well. So we actually have been working on our road rating program in anticipation of creating our work program for this year. And based off of the, the work that we believe is needed in those rural neighborhoods, that's where that one point five million dollar total comes from.
Is there a plan for Pebble Hills?
It would be part of, it was included obviously in the needs report that we discussed at the last meeting and we'll probably discuss it more today. So the amount of work that we're able to do in any of those concrete streets as far as reconstruction in those neighborhoods is, it's going to be entirely dependent upon what types of funding resources we're able to, to put towards that work.
Thank you. Were you done? All right, thank you.
I'll move to approve as presented with the change of three million to one point five million on item seven B. Second.
A motion by Pete, a second by John T., all those in favor? Aye, aye, opposed. Motion passes.
CCD Highway Cumulative Bridge.
Luke Maston, again, Highway Supervisor. Additional appropriations, item number eight and nine are related. These are for the estimated local match costs for upcoming Bridge one thirty six replacement project. This project is on Peterman Road, north of Fairview Road and is scheduled for in August in dot letting this year. The cumulative capital development number eight A. That additional appropriation is our anticipated local costs for the construction match as well as the local portion of inspection costs. And then item nine is the anticipated federal match for construction inspection costs. We pay those costs upfront and then are reimbursed by indot when we send in our plane vouchers. And that new fund eight two four three is how we keep track of that.
Does anybody oppose us taking these two together?
A motion for approval for BC, C E and C. I'm sorry, C eight and C nine together as presented.
Second.
A motion by Rob, a second by John Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Move, moving on. Item D, other business approval of ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero three and ordinance regarding an additional appropriation by White River Township Fire District.
Luke must be.
Was better than I was.
Luke Maston must be really tall. Damn.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
I'm Jeremy Powell. I'm chief of White River Township Fire Department. Michael Hoffman, our community liaison passed out the handouts and we have Chairman Michael Garrison and our accountant Ben Rager with us this evening. And we're coming to you asking you to approve an additional appropriation for two fire engines. This is actually a timing issue. What usually happens is that we present our budget, including our capital cumulative fund in September and October, and our budget gets approved and we order fire trucks. They come in in nine months and we put them in service. It's been pretty much that simple. And that's not the world we live in today. The world we live in today is that inflation is outrageous and it takes between eighteen and twenty four months to get vehicles. And I would have thought that that was unrealistic. But we've recently ordered an ambulance and it looks like it's going to be closer to that twenty four month mark rather than the eighteen month mark. Keeps getting pushed out because of supply chain issues. So we're asking for you as counsel to provide us with the appropriations. We can go ahead and enter into a contract to order these two fire engines that are already in our replacement cycle. They already budgeted the cumulative funds, but in your approval, obviously we have the cash balance. In the handouts, I was anticipating something that you would like to see. If I were in your shoes, I would have the question, what are you doing to be responsible? Number one, we're working with Bartersville much more closely than we ever have. And number two is we're sticking to our mission and we're putting our resources where they need to go to protect this community. So your first handout, you, I wanted you to see the sale of property that the district has done over the past year that's brought in seven hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. Was the excess land left at Molnax Road after indot built us that fire station, which brings us to the other side is that we've gotten the Station Fifty Three headquarters built by indot and Station Two Fifty Four, we partnered with Bartersville and Center Grove Schools. And then we presented a reimbursement request to FEMA to purchase an ambulance. Now, these are all needs. They would have to have been replaced by the taxpayers of White River Township. And we found ways to fund those. The next handout just shows you what we're replacing and how old they are. And the reason that we're asking for this appropriation now, waiting till the end of the year or next year. So this is something that we're doing to be extremely cost, cost conscious so that we can get ahead of the supply chain issues. We can get ahead of this inflation. We have gotten a tremendous deal on these engines and saving seventy five thousand dollars per engine over the next fire engine that would meet our needs. And the district and I both feel that it's essential because it's a more than a significant savings to the community to get the appropriation now so that we have the legal authority to enter into a contract and then order the engines and take them, take delivery at a limited and timing manner. So I would ask that you would approve this additional appropriation as is presented.
Good. Thank you. I believe this is open for public comment. Yeah. So if there's anyone in the audience or online that wishes to speak on this matter, please come forward. Anyone online? Okay, we'll close the public comments. Discussion from the council.
Are these first out engines?
Yes. Yeah, what we'll do, it, it shows a reserve on here, but what we'll do is we'll drop out, make these first out apparatus. We keep them first out for ten years and then we roll them down to reserve apparatus and shoot for another five to ten years. But we've found as frontline engines, our runs are going up twenty percent a year. So we're up to forty four hundred runs a year. And if you get past that ten year mark on a frontline engine, you're spending more money in maintenance than if you go ahead and sell the older engine, take your, this, your property disposal revenue and put it into a new one.
May I ask how much these old engines are worth?
Just. We just sold one that had been severely damaged once and been in a couple of accidents. That was costing us a fortune just to keep on the street. And we just got two hundred and sixty three thousand dollars for in our portion after advertising and consignment fees was two point five. So when you look at the, the one fifty Crimson.
Crimson. The Crimson's a two thousand seven.
And we're, we're hoping to get somewhere between one fifty and one seventy five for that one.
It's old for an engine, two thousand seven.
Yeah. We, we push these rotation cycles out as far as I feel like we should. Our number one priority is to keep them on the street. All right. I, I've got an extra vehicle at home that I can drive if it needs to go sit at the dealer. We can't do that with fire engine. And we've got the reserve apparatus, but we can't afford to be without one for a week. My staff vehicle is sitting at Dodge dealer right now and it's been sitting there since last week. We can't take that risk with the fire engines. Yeah, it's, it's old. And we want to push these rotation cycles out as far as we can without impacting service. Because you know, this community is going to need money for career firefighters and career paramedics. So we're trying to find ways to do what I would think you would want us to do, which is grow the department with the growth of the community without doing it on the backs of taxpayers. And that's where this revenue comes in. And savings and building fire stations and purchasing ambulances that the taxpayers otherwise would have done.
All right. So somebody needs to kind of explain. I'm, I guess I'm kind of not following. So you, you've sold some some equipment here.
Mm hmm.
And you're, you're using the proceeds towards purchase of more engines. Is that right?
Yes, we, we dispose of our, we've, we've sold the land. We sold over ambulances and an older engine. That's what provides the cash balance in the bank.
Right.
That's what we're going to use to pay for these fire trucks. And then we just need counsel approval for the appropriation.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to say I'm with you for the safety factor. I think these old engines are probably bad news, but it creates a problem when we have an additional appropriation because it's like these buckets, you know, that we have to fill and take from. I just had this thought cross my mind. Do the other fire districts have first shot at these engines or anything?
Yes, they, every single time we did, I go to the board, they declare surplus. We send an email to the chiefs of all the Johnson County departments. They have first opportunity.
Thank you.
I think there's something, there's two things. First of all, it's been working more and more at Bartersville. Bartersville is used exclusively. And they just came to you a few months ago.
Can you come to the microphone? Yeah, thank you.
For me and I to buy a new rescue and new fire engine. We have joined in with them because of the success they have had. And we're buying to the same new vehicles. Okay, the same manufacturer. So as we work closer together, we're going to have four in our combined firehouses of the same apparatus in there. Also, because we went to them and our neighbors of the south were working with so closely had just purchased from them, that we ended up getting both of the engines for an extra about twenty six thousand dollars off the piece. So we're just below, we're at like five ninety nine, nine ninety five per edge instead of six and a quarter. And not only the one that's already half built, that'll be here next January. But we got them to hold the price and one that's not going to be here for another eighteen months on the, on a good time. If, if everything goes perfect. The thing is this. We're asking permission to do this, but we haven't come to you forever for money. And we're not coming to you for money now for equipment. Other departments have had to come to you and go, hey, we need you to give us this bond for this approval and take money. We've only been coming to the council, the county council for boots on the street because it's so hard to get part time people. But when I come into you going, hey, we're going to spend this money, we need you funded. We are doing that ourselves.
Yeah, so the additional. Well, what I was going to say is the additional appropriation here, I believe is coming from cash on hand.
That's correct.
It's just basically they need the approval from us to spend that because it's above what their budgeted allotment was for this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is your, for a motion? Is your board, Jerry, is that board fully supportive of this request?
Yeah, Mike Garrison, Board Chairman. Yeah, we're fully supportive. It's, I'm sure you guys are seeing this in the private sector and in other departments. It's just, it's impossible to try to get something in the same budget year. And so we support the chief and the administration's plans to, to do this in this fact.
Great. Thank you. The, so the, the proceeds, when you do dispose of the Crimson and Rosenbauer units, what, what are the intentions with those cash proceeds?
Statutorily, they go back to the fund that you use to expend the original funds. That would be our cumulative fund. And that's essentially what I'm showing you right here is that we're disposing a property so that we can put that money, that cash back in the bank. And that's the cash we're using for the additional appropriation.
So what's the next move after this? Do you have more to replace in the near future?
Yes, we have a, we have a vehicle rotation cycle so that we can do long-term financial planning. Engines are frontline engines are ten years. Then we roll them down to reserve status and we try to keep them fifteen years or a little longer if possible. We've pushed all the staff vehicles out to eight years. We've pushed ladder trucks out to fifteen years. And ambulances, we are going to try to get three re chassis out of them and do that between five and seven years each time. Oh. Try. Well, I'll tell, we're directly, we're being a lot more efficient than we've ever been. We're not going straight to the, what kind of fire engine we want. Let's build a custom fire engine. We're going out looking for demo trucks. And we're thinking two and a half years ahead so that we don't get stuck in this supply chain issue and this, this inflation. And we're saving the taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars each time we do it. And then likewise with the ambulances is we're saving significant money and we're getting more life out of them by re chassising them.
Question. Question for Ben. Ben, financial condition of the, of the district. This is coming out of capital outlets, but general fund number of months in reserve, like how, how much do you? How are you feeling about the financial condition of the district as it is today with receipts and expenditures that are budgeted?
I feel okay with it. Essentially, operationally, within the general operations, finding a close to balanced budget, we've been planning for this cumulative fund. We've been saving cash on hand for this particular purpose. We just had this opportunity that came up, which is why we're coming now as opposed to next year.
So no red flags on, on your end?
Nope.
Okay.
And there's an operational advantage to operating the same equipment that a firefighter is standing next to the truck and use the same buttons and push the same valves that to do on the Bartersville truck. That's a minor thing, but.
There, there is. Barterville uses Saffin as the manufacturer for most of their apparatus. So what we did this time, rather than just putting a bid out there, we did a request for proposals to see what the best option was out there. And that could be a demo truck. That could be what I'll call a production truck, which is just as one that comes off the assembly line. I just pump them out year after year and custom build trucks. Well, what we found is Saffin was the most competitive. They had one on the line that they're building. It gives us, I think it gave us some, some, some leverage with Saffin. Of the prices that I have on here, Mr. Hoffman got them down another twenty five thousand dollars on each truck. And we'll be able to use the same maintenance facility that Barterville is using in addition to the operational safety and efficiency. And we exchange apparatus with, with our local departments too. So if Barterville's down a truck, we'll loan them an engine. If we're down an engine, then they can loan us one and it will help, it'll help that interoperability.
Anything else? All right. Okay, I move for approval.
Second.
A motion by Rob, a second by John Ed. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, item two, Sonoco. Approval of Resolution Twenty Twenty Two TA dash one.
If it's all right, Jim, I'll, I'll speak to this at least to delete us off. Of course, we heard from Sonoco and the representatives last, last meeting. And they have revised their request for the seven year abatement. Council made me aware prior to the meeting that one of the pieces of investment is, is the oxidizer. I believe that's the unit that will be affixed to the top that kind of cleans the admissions. That is not eligible for tax abatement, but they, Sonoco can seek exemption status for that piece of property outside of this process, should they choose to do that. So with, with that, I think the primary revisions to the application involve they create, reflects the creation of eight jobs and the retention of fifteen jobs. And I, and I think there was an error on her SB one form that was sent out. She current, the, the preparer indicated number of jobs retained, one hundred and forty two, but in the, in our app, a form of application, it's reflected, I believe it's fifteen jobs. We find that to confirm that. Yeah, fifteen jobs retained and eight created. So those are, other than the with those, those changes or to the process and the seven year versus ten, I believe were the only changes from the, the presentation made last. the the presentation made last month to the council. And and I would, I mean, I'm certainly open for discussion. I guess I can make a motion to get discussion going. I I would recommend approval of the abatement of the eligible pieces of equipment up to the the seven-year request presented by the applicant.
I'm gonna be honest and just say that gives me a little bit of heartburn that there's not representative from Sonoco here. And this is a fairly large request for them not to come to the meeting.
I also recall that you requested a five-year workup on this. Five-year abatement, so we're in addition to.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't remember if I, I I thought we had some discussion on that and.
Anybody else remember?
I think he said, I think he said he was just more open to a five-year instead of a seven-year. They're going to be paying twenty-eight fifty an hour.
They do employees.
I guess, you know, looking at it, I I came to terms with the seven-year. I'm all right with that, but feel like if we're going to pass this or vote on it, then they at least should be.
You know, since we're discussing it, I I've been kind of thinking about it off and on too, and I I would rather, I would rather it be five years. Just with so many changes that happen. That's my thought.
Council have any thoughts on postponing this vote until next meeting?
Mister, Mr. President, I have a motion that is out there. I made a motion that you could call for a vote on that.
What's your motion?
My my motion was to proceed with the seven-year abatement by the applicant on on the eligible property, business property and the real, the real property.
I'll second. There's fifty-six percent county employees that work there of their employees. Somebody asked about that.
I asked that last time, and they came back quickly with an answer, which I appreciate. I guess I I don't know, just just in one year, things have changed so much just for just the common person. I don't know. I just don't like the whole commitment.
I'd like to speak for the company in this respect, just in the in the seven-year and the five-year. There's really not much difference when you come right down to it percentage-wise. But I do get why you're, why you're wanting to establish a five-year trend.
John, could you move your mic closer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
So I'm okay with the seven-year. But this company presented pretty well the last time they were here. I think we were all here then. They're making an investment into our community again, and they do so locally. And in regard to paying taxes, not only through their income taxes, but, you know, under property taxes. So I'm for moving forward on this.
Rob, I just have one technical question. Is the oxidizer in these numbers that we have been taken out?
They have not. No, that was a recent point of education on our side. So so we would, if approved to proceed, we would ask the applicant to revise the the real number.
Right. And then Sheena Johnson, county attorney, procedurally, you would come back next month to either modify, rescind, or confirm the decision you're making on the resolution tonight. So we can, we can make that modification in between.
Got a motion by Rob, a second by John Ed. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion passes.
Who I, who opposed it?
I did. For the I don't have a problem with the abatement. I have a problem with setting precedents that we do something like this and the representatives don't show up. That's what I have a problem with. Moving on. The number three, Johnson County Redevelopment Commission. Got an update?
Sheena Johnson, county attorney and RBC secretary. The, we have engaged Jeff Peters to prepare the annual report. He is, he is prepared. What's in front of you, RDC and the commissioners have both approved it and just the next step is for you guys to approve it as well.
But we've not received it.
Wasn't any packet?
No.
Oh.
Yeah.
Unless I didn't have it, does anybody else know?
No.
We didn't receive it.
You've got time with Nick.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item E, Old New Business Road Funding Discussion and Capital Needs Report.
Good evening, Daniel Johnston, highway engineer, Luke Maston, Maston, the highway supervisor. He actually just stepped away thinking that that previous agenda. Take a little more time. So I would hate to provide the wrong information. I know that, I'm pretty sure that Luke has provided you all a series of memos cost information as well for some of our identified projects throughout the county, supporting the various numbers that he's prepared. And.
So he's coming back?
He should be, yeah. I would even recommend maybe if the council wanted to consider jumping to the item number two there. Before.
There he is.
You need to.
Go fast.
Luke Maston, highway supervisor. Apologize. I thought there was another item on the agenda. So at the last council meeting, we presented and had some discussion about the capital needs report that was prepared, identifying road and bridge needs throughout Johnson County. There was some conversation at the last meeting about how much potential revenue could be generated from some different funding options, in particular, a local income tax. And so the memo provided for this evening's meeting provides a few different pieces of information. One is an estimate if a lit is, an economic development lit is pursued by the county council, how much revenue that could be anticipated to bring in. In addition to that, provided some just general, simple estimates. If a lit is imposed, if the council decides or the commissioners decide to bond on that newly generated lit revenue, what the repayments and and lit rate required would be on several different bond options. And then there was a, a very basic project prioritization list that was included in the memo as well. This would be, as I mentioned in the memo, very bare bones minimum prioritization list, but even so totals about one hundred and sixty million dollars.
So is that listed in priority, Luke? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So that, even that list provided as an example, would total one hundred and six million dollars to try to tackle that work. So we certainly have, as we've discussed, a lot of work we're facing, and realistically, we're not going to be able to fund everything that was identified in the needs report. One other consideration on that sample list, prioritization list that was provided, and what makes these estimates so difficult is how federal funding grants and state matching grants play into completing these projects. Obviously, we would continue as we always have, going after grant opportunities to get matching funds to complete projects. If we're successful, that lessens the amount of local funding we have to spend on that project. Potentially opens up the capability of adding some other projects that were in the needs report. But those are not guaranteed funding awards, so it's difficult to quantify those at the moment. I I would think we will be successful, but on what projects and in what years is anybody's guess.
So in this prioritized list, you have, do you have like a start date and an end date that you anticipate? Do you have the kind of idea?
So that is dependent upon whether or not we were to choose to bond. If we choose to bond and with some sort of repayment with an economic development, those projects can happen at the same time. If we choose to pay as we go and not bond, then we would move down that list as the revenue is received. So it's dependent upon what funding mechanism we choose, how much revenue that generates, but we would work our way down that list, basically.
So logistically speaking, you know, if you did them all at one time, might be pretty hard to get around the county unless you had a helicopter. But I mean, are you taking that in consideration?
The projects that are, that were listed here again is only about twenty-five percent of the total projects that were identified in the report. Smith Valley Road would be phased regardless. That project would not be able to be completed at the same time. The other projects that would be identified for construction, completion through construction would be Park School Road, which would not impact, not be impacted by Smith Valley Road. And then several of the concrete neighborhood streets would be completed as well. And again, that, those projects would not cause any sort of traffic impacts between each other.
Yeah, it's a really good report. I really like it. I think you've done a great job. But it just, it's just lacking that one little piece for me, and that's how much for this year, how much for this year. And I know that's like the crystal ball. But can you help me any there at all?
I think we both need the same information. I need to know how much for this year and how much for this year in order to be able to give an idea of how many years it would take to complete a project and move on to the next project. It's not that I don't want to help provide that information, but that, that's a challenge for me with such a large list of work that needs to be done. There are all sorts of of different potential lit ideas and funding levels. But what those levels ultimately are will end up dictating how quickly we can move through the list.
And I think what you're saying is that it's a chicken and the egg. You tell me how much, you're asking your wife, how much can I spend? And she says, how much you got? And then that's how much I can spend. So the reverse of this is that if you, if we say it's fifty million a year, then you can tell us what projects you could do in that year, if I'm getting it right. But if we don't tell you how much to spend, you can't tell us what projects you can do.
Or how quickly they could be done.
But I think the one thing that you indicated in the report that I found fascinating, and I'm looking for it, was the number of years to complete based upon certain funding scenario. And one of them was fifty-six years. So Ron West might still be on the commissioners, but I think the rest of us would be gone.
I hope to be retired by then.
Yeah, which which report was that they had?
It was the second page of of the lit report from today. And again, that that was just intended to to give an idea of of what we're facing, honestly. The economic development lit works a little bit differently from the normal lit.
Okay.
But it is still distributed between the cities, towns, and counties. The unfortunate part of that is it's the county council that ultimately is the one that adopts it. In our county's case, the Johnson County government would receive about forty percent of the total revenue that would come in from a lift.
Hey, Luke, I got a question here on your first page on this chart here. So you're seeing average annual cost per household. So it's seventy-two thousand four hundred and forty. So it's the average annual in the county. Is that what?
Yeah, that that would, that is an estimate of the total number of households in the county. So just based off the number of households, those numbers at the bottom that were provided were just intended to give an estimate of what that impact is then on the average household.
So if they make less than that, you're just, you don't, you're not sure about the numbers.
If, yeah, ultimately, it's it's based on the income tax for the house or the, excuse me, the income generated at for the household.
So you're saying seventy-two thousand four hundred and forty households?
Correct. No, 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 no. Yes. It's a, and I'll step in for Luke on this. The 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 basis of the, the framework of the table you're referencing was prepared by Jeff Peters at at my request. The the seventy-two thousand four hundred and forty is a, is the median household income, that number, not the number of households. So so to take that illustration out, if you go over to the zero point four, the two hundred and seventy-four dollars, that would be the annual tax burden to a household reporting income of seventy-two thousand two four hundred and forty dollars. If you report more income earned in Johnson County, live in Johnson County, you'll pay more. If you less, it's less. And social security dollars are not subject to this tax.
So retirees, you're saying retirees?
Playing social security, pensions, don't know about. I don't, I don't think pensions are excluded if it's taxable income.
The, you know, the, what I found shocking, and I talked to Luke about it this morning, is that we take the heat for implementing the tax, but we only get forty percent of the revenue. And if you look at that chart, it shows it right there that the communities, and that's, you know, that's all right, you know, something to consider. But the cities and towns get sixty percent, but they don't have to make any tough decisions about implementing the edit. Is that correct, Luke?
That's correct. And it works that way for some other sources of revenue as well, in particular highway. In particular, highway related would be the wheel tax.
Unfortunately, I don't know what it is. I can't hear many people tonight. Could you move the phone microphone down? Thank you.
So unfortunately, it works that way with, with several different revenue sources. The wheel tax would be one that's road related. It's ultimately the county council that has to pass the wheel tax, but the. Revenue is then distributed and shared between the cities and towns as well.
And if you look at the second page, again, that was the shocker for me that. If you compare the twenty-twenty-two rate annual revenue projections and then look at the second page. On the point one up to the point five, eleven years taking it to happen at the point five. But staying at one percent is fifty-three years and twenty-six, twenty-eighteen, thirteen, eleven. And I think that's the, the kind of decision that we definitely have to consider and, and put into our decision making. But doing it at fifty-three years still is doing something. Doing it eleven years is doing one heck of a lot more. Also. There are some additional funding funds that are coming about that are. Open and that's the infrastructure plan. If you could speak to the infrastructure plan. And the conversation we had this morning, we share that with the council.
Sure, so the. The new infrastructure bill replaces the previous, the fact fast act, which is the federal. Infrastructure bill that we were working under previously. The new bill does increase federal funding allocations. For a wide variety of infrastructure, does include additional money for roads and bridges as well. Somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-five or so percent, depending on the program that you're talking about. Those funds don't come directly to us, uh, so essentially. The pot of money that we would pursue a federal grant, for example. The Indiana Department of Transportation would have additional money that they could award in each call for projects. Which ultimately then means more projects that are awarded. And, and funded, so yes, under the new infrastructure bill, there is a potential for. Additional projects to be awarded if we apply for them. Uh, in particular, there's an emphasis on, on bridge work, um, local bridges and bridges that are off system. So we could see some benefit there as well, but again, those funds don't come to us directly. They are competitive grant applications that are submitted.
And to give you some perception of what that is, the, it's eight million, eight some point, point, something million for the state and infrastructure. The bridges and roads is about six point two, so we're talking about twenty-five percent of six point two million going. To possibility being awarded the counties, the numbers are just unbelievable, you know, the potential, of course, you know. You don't take all ninety-two counties and divide it into the twenty-five percent of six point two billion. Uh, but you know, we, we'll be competitive and Luke's point is, is no assurance that any county would get a particular amount of it. But the reports are indicating that central Indiana would be receiving a fairly major amount part of that, that. There was also an information that I sent to Luke, uh, if you could speak to that other one, uh, that we talked about that you're looking into.
There is, uh, in the infrastructure bill, it continues the raise act. Which is an annual federal funding program that is administered directly by federal highway. Typically, uh, that program is for larger scale projects. It is also, uh, i- if we think our local federal funding programs are competitive, that is. Competitive on a national level. I don't know that it's common for local governments to receive awards. But that is, is certainly a funding program we could look into. But on top of that, there was another federal highway administered program similar to that. The world block program, grant program, that is another potential avenue to apply for federal funding. It is intended for rural areas, so not every portion of the county would apply. But it could be a potential funding source for, uh, some of our rural roads or rural bridges that need funded as well. The difference in that again is that that program is, is administered directly by federal highway. Not by NDOT, so we would have to make our grant applications to Washington. But it is another option available.
And the mega is threshold is a hundred million?
It is. I mentioned there are other, uh, infrastructure types that are included in the federal infrastructure bill. There is a, a mega, I'm not making that up, the mega.
It's what it's called.
That is primarily intended for bridges, um, that span state lines or that are. Huge costs, a hundred million dollars, I believe is the minimum. So that would not be a, a program that would be available to us. There are a lot of, of portions of the new bill that would not be viable options for funding for us. But there is additional funding added and that additional world block program as an option.
So to summarize what the discussions that we've had on this is that. These proposals are how basically we can have funded with what we know we can possibly do based upon. Implementing through bonds and or through, uh, paying the bonds through, uh, economic lit. But if any of these things come to be, then there could be reductions in the demand. From these funding sources that have been proposed, if they fail and don't come through, or we don't get a competitive share of it. Then how do we proceed and how we proceed is what he's proposed in the package here, is that correct statement?
Yeah, uh, pretty much that, again, we have been very fortunate in receiving federal funding awards. I would hope that that would continue to be the case, but. Since there are no guarantees and there are no. Real good ideas on what years we might receive funding for what projects. What was listed in here assumes a hundred percent local funding. So in the event that, uh, in the future, we apply for a federal funding grant for a project that we had. Previously planned to construct with a hundred percent local funds. That frees up local funds to be used towards moving down the priority list and addressing other projects.
Like local, uh, concrete street.
That or, uh, any of the thoroughfare plan projects that were identified. There, there are, there's no shortage of potential places that we can. Continue to see benefit if we do, if we are lucky enough to get federal funding to help, uh, afford some of this.
So my question here is, what if this, what's our other options if this? If this is a no-go?
So. There are not many options when it comes to, um, road funding. There are a few. The one that is no one's favorite is the wheel tax. Obviously, we have that in place right now. A few years ago, the state legislature, uh, updated the statute. And essentially doubled the rate that a county can set for the wheel tax. That is a potential place that we could look at getting additional funding. However, that is a pretty regressive tax and definitely not one of our ideal options if we can help it. At half, we are at about half of what the available toll rates on the wheel tax could be set at. Uh, last year that brought in about one point seven eight million dollars.
And isn't that distributed in the same fashion forty, sixty?
It is distributed to the cities and towns, but it uses a different, um, funding formula. It actually uses the same funding formula that our local road and streets fund utilizes. And that's a, that's based on a mixture of population and road mileage between all the entities within the county.
Well, it's not exactly the same formula, but. We implement an increase in the wheel tax, but the cities and towns. Don't have to act on that and then they get a certain percentage of the funds. We don't get a hundred percent of the increase.
Correct. So.
Is there not any money we can move around?
Not of any significance and without, without jeopardizing wherever we're taking it from. I mean, rainy day is five, six million, I ca- I can't remember off the top of my head, but it's roughly, it's not a number, can't. Move it out of jail it, we, we have, we can push more general fund obligations potentially into the jail, up to the operational cost of the jail. Into the lit and that could free up a little, uh, but it, it's not, when you look at the scope of the needs. The dollar price tags associated with that, those would be. A, a drop in the bucket a- as far as addressing them.
And there's one I am surplus where I'm, you've talked, our, our surplus, our fifty percent.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're a little bit, I mean, you, uh, my quarter would, would tell you we're in a good. For the condition, you know, financially and we would, we could probably come off a little bit of our general fund. Uh, balance, but again, not a material number.
Well, she was asking about sources and that, that is a source.
Well, I wouldn't think so because I think that the fifty percent number around there is good. It allows you to do more capital outlays, am I right, Rob?
Yeah, it's, it's a. For sure.
I'm just saying she asked where, and that's a potential source.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to ask you, Rob, what, what's the bond market right now?
Well, so that's, thank you for the segue in, in a way. So the, the tables in here referencing the dollar amounts and things, I, I want to preface that, that. You know, Jeff Peters helped me with those numbers. Luke did some extrapolations to go out further in time and, and also. Make some assumptions, so, um, let's use the term approximations and, and, and when we're looking at numbers, number two. Uh, the rates have gone up, the two point seven five number that you see on top of page two. That interest rate was assumed before a fifteen-year repayment period. If we were to go longer out on the curve, then, um, we're going to see a, a bump in that, so our cost of financing this would, would increase over time. And, and most likely the fifteen years even higher than two seven five right now, uh, than when we, my first asked Jeff to help me with this. Four to five weeks ago.
I just think this is just the absolute worst time. Like ever to be asked for this, I mean.
It's, I, I don't feel like it's ever a, a good time. I think the income trends of our county are going in the, in the right direction. It's not sustainable, it's not perpetual. But, but overall, we are a, a growth. County, we are a, uh, or our income is growing in the county by and large. So it's, you're right, it's never a good time, but what, what happens? M- Mullen, I think that mindset, and, and nothing wrong, not being, it's not critical in that way, but that is the mindset of. We'll wait till the better day and there never is a better day, hardly ever a better day. And, and the needs just keep compiling, so it's one of these.
I get it, I just. You've got the state that puts the whole gas tax, we know we're paying thirty cents a gallon. For the gas tax and then, I mean, if, if that isn't bad enough, then now, now you're talking about this, I don't know.
Yeah, it's not easy. The other source, um, of, of this, so. The number on page two, the hundred and six million-ish or whatever. There, the number that I had Jeff Peters estimate for me was eighty million and. That there's a thirty-five million dollar other source opportunity. That would be negotiated between the commissioners and, and, uh, the state of Indiana through NDOT and relinquishment of roads. That is a, that is a lump sum, here's thirty-five million dollars in a relinquishment of certain roads in the county. Uh, or from the state to a county and we would then be responsible from that point forward forever to maintain and service those roads. To improve those roads, to do everything with those roads. So it's a concept that I know City of Franklin utilized. It's other communities in the state have gone through the relinquishment process. It kickstarts a lot of capital projects for, for towns or, or counties like us. And thirty-five million is a very meaningful number. There is, at this point, if I may, a string attached to that, one of many strings that, that thirty-five million can only be used on Smith Valley Road. When you see the number for Smith Valley Road.
Yeah.
It doesn't touch that, so it touches it, but it leaves a gap. So there's still a gap there that needs to be addressed. So those are some other, we, we talked to, you know, other sources, places to look. I'm not saying every rock has been unturned or turned over, looking for a dollar here, a dollar there. But the end of the day, these are, these are projects with big price tags. Price tags that in my opinion have elevated, not only due to, to inflation, but due to the length of time since they've been addressed. In other words, the need has been outstanding longer than, than, um. Then it's, it's caused price increase or it's caused it to inflate, in my opinion. I don't know if that is helpful, I, I. Believe infrastructure is our direct reflection, quality infrastructure is direct reflection on, on local leadership. And it's the one thing that we are capable doing, um, and I think we can be fiscally responsible to do it. But, but I don't know where we step off with, so I think the prioritization list. That Luke prepared along with assistance from commissioners and, and Daniel is a starting point. Of, of where this county needs to go to, to improve upon its infrastructure. Cause what is happening is happening whether we come along or not. It's just whether we want to be as prepared as possible. To make. Transportation, to make, to make communication, to make all these things connectivity, there's the word I'm looking for. In our county for our constituents and those visiting and doing business here as, as, um. As good as possible.
And the last example of, of a, a fund or a resource. Um, was that federal to county or state to county?
The relinquishment?
Yeah.
That is a state to county.
And Luke, what's your opinion in a nutshell of doing, doing something like that?
It would result in a little over twenty miles of additional road that would be maintained by the county. I believe the offer that we've been given, uh, especially in comparison to other, uh, relinquishment. Offers that the state has made around the state is, uh, very fair. If you're just looking at it from that standpoint. From our operations, we would need to add probably two full-time positions. Just to try to keep up with winter maintenance. Uh, we would receive additional revenue because those road miles would be added to our certified road inventory. That's not going to be a windfall of revenue.
And part of the reason that it is, is fair is because. Had not, it been for the sixty-nine construction, the demand on Smith Valley would not have been potentially great. It would have still been great, like sixty-nine sort of kickstarted that there's. Need to do that and then why they needed to be more fair, is that correct?
I, I'm confident that that factored in when, in our negotiation.
Yeah.
Make no mistake. There's a reason why the, the state wants to get rid of those roads. They're highly traveled roads and yes, right now, it's kind of. Nice. Thing on that thirty-five million in front of us when we need it, but, um. The long and short of it is, uh, pay me now or pay me later, we're, we're gonna end up paying for it. I, I'm not in favor of taking that option.
I wanted to speak to, to what Rob said there that, you know, what, what we're facing is. For whatever reason, the actions taken or not taken previously. To bite off this huge, uh, prod, these huge issue. John said last week, it was time for us to do something. I believe you said it was time for us to do something. Pete said it was time for us to do something. And we have two choices. And we have two choices, do nothing and kick it down, kick the can down the road. Whoever heard that said before.
Agree with that.
Or you know, we do something now.
No, I disagree with that, Ron. I I get where you're going with it, but. So to Melinda's point, I totally agree. This is horrible timing. For a three decade high inflation, the economy is uncertain as it's ever been. To Rob's point, there's never a good time, but I think there is a happy medium here. I, you know, I don't know that we need to look at the four point four percent lit that would take, address all of our needs. I mean, we we just passed a jail that is going to, in all honesty, have some excess funds. And and would be available to. Transfer some money out of the general fund that could cover some of these projects. Replace it with funds from the jail. I don't know that I like to lean on the backs of the taxpayers for the full amount when we can. Put together a solution with some funds we have on hand, some other revenue sources. But I mean, the bottom line is to accomplish this, we're going to need. We're gonna need to look at this edit. I I just am not sold on. Using the edit to fix the, as the only solution. I think we need to look at how we can use some excess funds from the lit and some funds from other sources.
Doing something, that's all I was getting.
I'd like to speak to the correctional facility lit. When we collect the tax dollar from the taxpayer, it goes for, it should go for that specific purpose. We're not done with that yet, at least in my viewpoint. We have community corrections that needs to come out of that. I think that we're headed towards a lit that is different. We're currently about in the in the lower ten counties in Indiana. For our county tax rate. And that's due to a lot of conservative good decisions by past county councils. And habits of the commissioners. But we've had some things, some big projects moved up. The interstate came a couple of years early. Which didn't allow us to plan for that. But I think that when you look at these numbers. If even if you add this point three percent or point three percent. So move that decimal point two over and add it to our. Point oh one, you know, we still don't even get within. Seventy percent of the counties in the state as to what they're collecting. So I think that we need to be reasonable.
I I mean, I understand why it's important to compare counties, but at the same time, I'm not representing those counties.
State, though, the state, when we supposedly raise taxes. It's really not a raise in this situation with the roads. It's a shift. It's a shift from the state tax level to us. So. I think it's a perception problem.
Rob, didn't you have a report? Didn't you have a report? You submitted to us about, for example, Hendricks and other counties, the percentage of how much. We were below what they are charging for, are not charging, but what they've implemented for lit.
Yeah, I provided a handout. It was where, sorry, that was a table taken off of DLGF, I think, or state board.
This report, right.
Yeah.
I I just, I'd like to make a point. I don't disagree with what you're saying. I I understand where you're coming from on the taxpayers. Or tax for a specific purpose, but the bottom line is that jail. Has about sixteen years left on its life. Over the course of that sixteen years, were estimated to. Be in excess of another eighty to one hundred million dollars. Community corrections will, from what I've heard, to build that building is probably in the range of seven to eight million. There will be, there will be needs as we grow, but I think that there's room in that lit. And and I don't disagree that it is. It should be what the taxpayers were sold on, but I think the taxpayers would much rather us utilize. Excess funds in.
Right.
Their, what they're already being taxed on than to impose larger. Additional taxes on them. When we could find the money within what we already have. And we we don't have anywhere near what it will take to do these projects just with that. And I'm not saying drain that jail lit. I'm saying let's look at what we need to grow. Get a educated guess on where that number is gonna be. And if it's twelve to fifteen million dollars that we can move out of it over the course of the next five to ten years. Then we do that as as a solution to keep the burden of imposing an edit as low as possible on the taxpayer.
I agree.
I don't disagree with you about that. Our intention was to save that money for future jail expansions. So right now, what you're talking about is problem Peter, Paul.
No, because in sixteen years, the next council can decide that, you know, what they need to grow that jail again. We will extend the lit. That's, that's up, that's up to them, otherwise it sunsets.
It has a sunset and can't extend it. Correct, Rob.
Correct, it has to be a whole new, it has to be a whole new tax and process and ordinance. I mean, from the taxpayer, it might be indifferent, but from a procedural standpoint, yeah.
And on that, we get a hundred percent of it. It's not divided up between the other cities and towns. And what what's another addition gonna cost?
Well, but the road projects are all gonna be within the unincorporated county.
Right, we get a percentage of that due to lit.
What I'm saying is the the jail lit is still what, even though we get a hundred percent of it. A hundred percent of any funds that we put towards these road projects are gonna go into the unincorporated county. It's not gonna go into the cities and towns.
Right, but I thought our intentions were to have money on hand, so for a future jail expansion, they could pay cash.
I I think we can. I think we can do both.
And juvenile maintaining those buildings, programming and everything.
I think we can.
Luke, do you, do you agree with what our president's saying here? Sorry.
Thank, thanks for putting me on the spot. From from the standpoint of having to go to the people that we serve and ask for additional money. We know where it's going. It's going into infrastructure and intended to benefit as many people as possible. But if there are. Other potential funding sources, even if it's a small amount here or a small amount there. That could potentially result in a lower lit than what we might implement. I I I would think that that our taxpayers would expect us to look for that. But to Rob's point. There aren't huge numbers around. We may be able to find a little bit in different places. But every little bit could help as well.
But the thing I wanted to do way on really was Jim's statement that the jail lit would be used only for. The roads and the unincorporated areas. Do you agree with that?
The jail lit, I don't believe is eligible for road networks.
Well, we would have to play the show game.
I see.
Potentially be looking at an adjustment to the jail lit or an adjustment in how other parts. Of the general fund budget that could be paid out of there. Could those changes could be made to free. Everybody knows which.
We would have, we would have to use the. Transfer money out of the.
Thank you for that.
We know, there would be no transferring. The appropriation for the operation of the jail would be from the jail lit. Thereby creating money, there's no transfers allowed. It's it's an appropriation process, very similar to what we went through this past year. When we brought over, I think, medical and something else. One point five million ish was appropriated out of jail that for the operation of the jail. The jail operational budget, legacy jail, new jail is is, and by my estimate. Approximately seven point five million annually. That's the number that potentially could go over. We can't say it costs nine million to operate if it only has seven and a half of, you know, of of a budget or an expenditure, so.
Right, and we had from one of the commissioners a thumbs up about, it wasn't a thumbs up about necessarily doing this. It was a thumbs up about potential cross cost for community corrections was, you have a ten million. Perhaps instead of five or seven, what what's the potential reality of that?
I think it's approximately, if if the building we were looking at, I think it was, is it eighteen thousand square feet? At roughly six hundred and something a square foot, so it was substantially more than seven to eight million for. An appropriately sized community correction facility that would also house programming throughout the day, staff, overnight guests.
Rob, you were in the same meeting I was when Commissioner Walls told us that. His initial estimate was seven million dollars for that building. That's where I got that number.
And and that doesn't include land acquisition if it goes, if we have to acquire land, that's just construction cost.
Was there someone talking back there in the back of the room?
For the record, that was Commissioner Kevin.
Well, and you know, and as we debate and discuss all of this, you know, they're never a good time. And and you know, I am obviously the senior citizen and, you know, my my income is on a local. Or whatever kind of local income tax. You know, the less you make, the less you pay. And you know, there are a number of seniors that, you know, perhaps don't reach. The seventy two thousand average. So it doesn't mean that, you know, all seniors, if you look at them as a group, which is a major percentage of our people. Are bringing in seventy six thousand dollars a year, so, you know, I I'm.
It does not affect social security.
I'm sorry.
It does not affect social.
Yeah, so I'm saying over and above social security. I mean, you know, that they're the income there. So, you know, what what at what point is this suggested that we need to do something to make some decision? To move forward with what he's presenting to us, because we're not asking to be doing it tonight. So what is the expectations present of how we're gonna move forward with this over and above the twenty fifth meeting? Which is, you know, about ARPA. Not necessarily, I mean, we got one point five million in there for roads, but what's the timeframe of what's expected to be done?
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but there is one piece of information related to the relinquishment agreement. That might affect that answer. If the county commissioners do ultimately decide to accept the relinquishment agreement. Part of the funding plan from NDOT would include providing federal funding for the design of Smith Valley Road. That is contingent upon those dollars being obligated in this fiscal year, which is coming to an end. The, so if if we were decided to do the relinquishment. But we've made that decision after essentially probably the end of this month. Then those dollars, that portion, which is about three point six or three point eight million dollars. Would not be available in the relinquishment. And we would have to fund the design of Smith Valley Road with a hundred percent local funds.
With, I'm sorry, with a hundred percent what?
Local funds.
So there's that timeline, which is important because there's a big number associated with that. The, our action as a council, the, when I'm working from a DLGF handout. We would need to complete the lit adoption prior to August thirty first. In order for the rate to take effect October first, which is when the taxpayers would be felt. The the impact of the taxpayer and the funds would then be made available January one of twenty twenty three. That's that, so if you, if we move beyond the August thirty first deadline. Then things get pushed out until. I think, I think everything gets moved almost, almost a full year, about ten months into October of the of twenty twenty three.
And when is the end of the fiscal year that Luke's talking about?
So that is the state fiscal year, which technically ends at the end of June. However, NDOT typically shuts down obligation of new funds before that point. In order to ensure that we could get those federal dollars for Smith Valley design. NDOT has asked us to make that decision by the beginning of May. Now, understand, that doesn't mean we have to have all of the funding that we've talked about figured out today. I would assume from the commissioner's standpoint. If if there is confidence that at a minimum. That twenty million dollars that the county would have to provide to finish Smith Valley Road was going to be addressed. That seems like the information that they would need in order to be able to make that decision by that time.
So so the action point for this council. We'd have to have a special meeting if we don't conclude tonight, something, I mean.
Not necessarily. But confidence from the commissioner's standpoint that at a minimum. That twenty million dollars, if the relinquishment agreement is is approved. That the, that we are gonna be able to provide that twenty million dollars in order to get Smith Valley Road.
In some form or fashion.
Correct, yes. And it can be any form or fashion. But we need to be prepared to make that commitment to finish that project out. If we are going to accept the relinquishment. What's what's at jeopardy in the short term is the design, engineering design funding. That NDOT has offered as a part of that overall relinquishment agreements. That decision would have to be made by the beginning of May.
So are the commissioners comfortable with it? Okay, or do you need an official? You need an official, yes, 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 yes.
I mean, I think ultimately you'd have to ask them that question.
Well, I just asked him and he said, I think he said no, that you wouldn't be comfortable with it. Sound good to me, you want official.
And keep in mind as well, as. We pointed out with the relinquishment agreement, it is a significant amount of money to kickstart one of our highest priority projects. But it comes with strengths and those are the types of things that the commissioners have to consider as well.
So we have a couple more meetings. We have the the joint meeting with council and commissioners. Could we breach this at that meeting or not? Was it on the table? No. Oh, okay.
That's an awful lot to bite off, John, you know.
So what I was getting at is we have one more council meeting before June. so what I was getting at is we have one more council meeting before June. And so there's gonna have to be either a decision made at the June meeting, or we're gonna need to discuss it further at the June meeting, or we're gonna have to have a special meeting. So.
You said before that though, didn't you?
If we're going to accept the relinquishment agreement and, uh, receive the engineering design federal dollars towards Smith Valley, that decision needs to be made essentially by the beginning of May.
Yeah, it is.
And that's.
Not June, the beginning of May.
Well, but, yeah, but what I'm saying is we have one more meeting in May. And if we don't achieve what we need to achieve in that May meeting, we need to have a special meeting.
Yep, but the commitment has to be in the beginning of May.
If if we're going to accept the relinqu.
If we're gonna accept the relinquishment agreement, so we have to have a special meeting before.
That's not a, since the commissioner.
It is, um, but there's a, there's, there's gonna have to be a commitment to find that other twenty million dollars in order to see that project completed.
Commissioner, could you, could you come up? If.
Don't go too far, Luke.
All right, so as far as this timing of what you need and how formally you need it, could you explain what you're looking for?
Well.
For the relinquishment.
First of all, Kevin Walls, Johnson County Commissioner. I mean, we've negotiated this NDA deal to where we can negotiate. Like Luke said, we need twenty million dollars to finish that project out. You guys are gonna have to come up with some kind of solution that's gonna make us feel comfortable that we can. I don't want to take that thing three quarters of the way through, and I think some of the relinquishment is tied to our funding. So we've got to have a funding source for that. And that basically lays in your lap to come to us and say, yes, we can fund this twenty million dollars, because I can't go on a, yeah, maybe we'll do it, maybe we won't. It stops it right in the middle of the road.
That's what I'm saying, but when do you need that? From what Luke was just telling, I thought I heard him say May, beginning of May.
It is the end of this month is when we need to know. Because we'll lose three point two million dollars in design and engineer.
So we can't wait. I mean, what, John, what you're saying wasn't what he's saying.
Well, could it be in the form of a letter of commitment?
Personally guaranteed.
Yeah. From Rob.
Only Rob, yeah. At least the people who are leaving the council could, uh, so, so we have two choices. One is to have a special meeting to give you an official statement, because it's not acceptable for us to say, eh, I'm a supporter. Or we, well, we have to have a special meeting to get this to you when you need it to feel comfortable to proceed with the relinquishment.
If you're gonna do that, uh, my suggestion to you would be maybe on the twenty fifth also. Once we adjourn the council commissioner joint meeting, you can, you're all here. If you're able to make it, and you can go right into your meeting or do it prior.
Does it need to be a public meeting?
Yes.
I was making suggestions of them on the joint council and commissioner.
Or after.
Your direction you're going, because that, we have to get back within doc. We have to let them know.
I don't think it should be included in the ARPA meeting.
No, no, I'm saying you should have your council meeting prior to the joint meeting.
Or a, or after. Because we can still get that to you. We can have it the evening after. Yeah.
Yeah, why wouldn't we do it while we're all here?
No, I'm saying we shouldn't discuss it during the ARPA meeting, that we should have a separate council meeting from the ARPA meeting, which is a joint meeting. Because we've got too much talk about that as ARPA. So what was, ARPA meeting would remain what it's supposed to be, and then we would have a special meeting to be concluded whenever after the meeting, or whatever, or the next day.
This room is booked after our meeting, so it would have to come prior before our meeting. So if you met at three o'clock, is what I'm saying. After our meeting at four thirty, it's gonna take, this room is already scheduled out for another meeting. BZA has a hearing in here, so we won't be able to use this facility.
I mean, it's up to whoever can make, I can make it anytime.
I think we need to come up the funding source. I don't think we need to rob Peter to pay Paul. So I think we need to look at this lit and move forward in some, some fashion.
I mean, to sum it up, you know, every road in Johnson County needs work.
We haven't been.
We haven't been done our due diligence in the past.
Right.
I'm gonna say that.
I think we need to be part of the solution, not part of the problem.
Thank you.
We don't have to solve all of it by the twenty sixth. We just have to solve this commitment right now. And that's what I'm trying to focus on this president is getting what is needed right now, and that's the commitment and the discussion about that commitment.
Commitment of twenty million dollars.
That's the chunk we gotta deal with in the next couple of weeks, not the whole. Correct.
Well, I think they're wanting the same when it really comes down to it. Well, unless you have twenty million dollars over there, just tuck away some.
Well, they are the same, but, you know, we have to make a decision very quickly about that.
I think what we need to do is agree upon having a special meeting prior to our special meeting. It feels like we're back in comfort again.
Yeah.
I'm in training that day.
What, what day are we looking at?
It was April twenty fifth, but there's a commissioners meeting at ten.
Can I?
And a, and our joint meeting with commissioners and council is at four thirty. And I'm with John, I can't make it in the afternoon, that afternoon.
Anytime before that. Before that day.
Well, let's do the parties.
Getting tight to the window, I think, on you guys advertising.
Two weeks, ten days, what's the, what's the? How do we commit without? Yeah, thanks, sir. Sounds legally used to me.
Or it could be on the twenty second, for example, so I'm, I'm going backwards from the twenty fifth.
Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's look at the twenty first, that's a Thursday.
In the afternoon.
Morning.
Afternoon. Whenever.
Morning would be.
Come up twenty first.
Can you do it in the morning?
Yeah.
You can't.
No, but.
You don't be there.
Monthly board meetings.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
How about Wednesday, the twentieth? Three P M. Is that available?
Yes.
How long do you think we're good, this is gonna take?
Six hours.
Four hours.
I would schedule at least.
I'm gonna go to tonight. Where to? Everybody's limited to ten minutes of speaking. I'm just teasing.
Is the room available, is there a room available the afternoon of the twentieth? I may have to go on.
Yeah.
We're having two special meetings.
We're having a special.
I'm going to the twentieth.
So we're heading for the twentieth at what time?
Three o'clock. Okay. Well, I'll have Sheena talk to the other two tomorrow, other two commissioners and Will.
We're still meeting the twenty fifth.
You talk about our.
So our special meeting, we, I'm sorry, today, was there a decision made here?
Twenty of the three P M.
Okay.
And we have the one on the twenty fifth.
And that's the special, special meeting.
Yeah.
Different subject.
You all aren't used to those special meetings, are you? We get called in about.
You go special squared, up to the second power.
Well, you know, you got all this.
Yes.
Okay, good.
That's at three o'clock.
So we've notified the paper.
Okay.
Okay.
So we will conclude this.
Do we have the budget hearing dates?
Oh, we.
I'm getting very shortly. Be excused from the jury box.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You can excuse.
Thank you, Commissioner. And so we will postpone this, uh, vibrant discussion until the twentieth.
It's a good word.
All right. Are we ready for the redevelopment? You know what? Bring it on.
Well, is there any questions you have? Um, the R D C does have a funding source and economic development fee that's paid, paid under the auditor's office, so, um, you can see that they have money coming in, and that's where it comes from. The expenditures are related to the development of two different tip areas last year, um, with legal fees and financial consultant fees, and then, um, their bond and reporting fees, so.
The R D C secretary is accurate and all that. Well done.
Thanks.
So certainly, but I'll entertain questions, but it's a pretty straightforward, simple, uh, annual report back to the council.
We didn't date it.
It's the twenty twenty one annual.
We'll make sure. I'm, I'm sorry, what was the date?
It's the twenty twenty one annual report of the Johns County Redevelopment Commission. It's presented to the commissioners and to the council for, um, acceptance.
Right.
Yes, or notification. We motioned to, we motioned to, I'm, I'm motioned to accept.
Do we need a motion to accept?
Please, please move to.
Motion to accept the Johns County Redevelopment Commission annual report for its fiscal year twenty twenty one.
Second. Motion by Rob, second by P. All those in favor? I, I, opposed, passes. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
No. Item A, number two, discussion on budget hearing dates.
Typically, it's the first, um, Tuesday and Wednesday in September for the, um, first go around, and then, and then after that, it's the following Thursday, sometimes it's put off two weeks to, uh, the third Thursday of the month.
So. Yeah, I mean, I'm good with the sixth and seventh and fifteenth, if everybody else is.
So September sixth and seventh.
And then the fifteenth for the second reading.
It's usually Tuesday, Thursday.
Doesn't matter. Okay. Six, eight, and fifteen.
I'm good for six and eight, but not fifteen. I'll be out of state on the fifteenth. But that's all right.
Six, eight, thirteen.
Six, eight, fifteen.
About six, eight, fourteen.
I'm, I'm out of almost that entire week. I'm out of state all week, pretty much.
Let's push back, so it's eight twenty two.
Guys, you, people can do this, all right?
Y'all are.
Six, eight, fifteen.
If everybody's available except Rob.
Yeah.
Rob has the ability to zoom. Said we can't do it on, but can't zoom on, but except into, but.
All right.
Isn't that correct? Cannot zoom on, except. Oh, no, he, he can't act upon anything that.
It's, it's a moot point. Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Now, Amy, is that in fitting with what the date you have to meet? She's shaking her head, yes. That record shows she's saying, yeah.
So final adoption on the, uh, regular council meeting. Okay.
Did it tend?
Yeah, that's fall break. That's problematic.
Now, what's the problem now? What date?
It's a regularly scheduled.
It's a federal holiday, number one, which I've never understood why the hell we meet on a federal holiday. That's just me talking. Well, we shouldn't have to, we shouldn't be on a holiday. County shouldn't be open on that holiday.
Well, my, my.
What holiday? We can't.
We posted it to Tuesday before.
Yeah.
Well, the.
I'm fine with kicking it to the next. Week.
Of September.
Does anyone else have a problem with that? If not, John T is leading the charge.
I think you can do it. You can do it.
All right, everybody good with seventeenth?
Wait a minute, now let's.
Seventeenth is a box.
Geez, you guys are talking.
P M, right?
Five P M, six P M.
A regular meeting is when in October?
Seventeenth.
I got it on the tenth.
Oh.
Thought that was September.
Stay with us, Ron.
Well, I'm trying to. It's past my bedtime. Okay, October, this tenth with, or seventeenth is a regular council meeting.
And final adoption. Especially against a five. You hear five.
Okay, and on the front end of that concerning budgets, uh, was dates for us to move, we can talk about it another time, where we make recommendations, but I talked with Amy this morning, if there's any way we could act sooner, uh, rather than later. Last year, we didn't make recommendations to the department heads about salary increases until July the twelfth. And that was because Mike Rogers didn't get to us until later, but you talked, or you had an email or some discussion. I would suggest that the sooner, the sooner we can have him, the sooner we can make recommendations from the council about what should be, which gets them, get the information to Amy sooner, and she likes to have it by what day? Approximately as soon as possible. Trying to, just trying to move it up a little sooner so they have more time and not so cramped.
Amy, does Mike usually do that at five?
Yes.
Okay, let's make, uh, so everyone available for five o'clock next, uh, month.
Okay, so what are we changing to five o'clock?
Uh, Mike Royder will give us the fiscal update or fiscal plan up.
Okay, so, okay.
Our next meeting, but we usually do it early.
Our next non-special move.
Just one, one, one night a month.
Okay. So we're good with that? We don't, do we need a vote on that? Okay.
May ninth.
May ninth at five P M. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
So move your turn.